Next up is item B five. We have city attorney Kylie Finnell here to present ordinance to amend BMC Chapter nine dot three two entitled quote unauthorized camping. Yeah.
Is this okay?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. I'm in such gears here a lot sort of right now. Um, okay, so. This is resuming our discussion of taking action on a portion of the Birmingham Municipal Code that regulates camping in public spaces. This discussion started with the study session on June twenty eighth, the council, her public comment on July fifth. It's back at study session today for me to. Answer questions and hear your input from where you're headed, what you'd like me to draft. And then we have a council meeting day on the nineteenth of July. Certainly, that doesn't have to be. The final discussion of this issue, if we don't feel like we have a clear direction or we don't know exactly what that direction is after tonight's study session. We could discuss it at another study session. The. I don't have additional materials for you tonight simply because I feel like the issues are pretty well laid out as to. The reason for the need to take action on this ordinance. If there are questions about that, I can certainly address them. I really wanted to spend tonight more with a closed my ears open and happy to find out what it is that this council would like to see for this community. And just as a refresher of what we're looking at currently, our code prohibits camp camping in public spaces all over the city all the time. Ninth Circuit decisions have indicated that we need to change that and. The ways that which they can be changed would be to repeal the ordinance and hold and that we just wouldn't have ordinance prohibiting. The council did take similar actions, for example, on the paneling ordinance last year. We didn't try to craft that anyway. And the other action would be to amend what we have right now and. Try to come up with one that is in line with the Ninth Circuit's decision, which does leave open the option for a municipality to regulate time, place, manner, type restrictions on camping. So long as there's not a blanket prohibition and that really takes into account that shelter space availability. As an aside, and I won't go into it, the Ninth Circuit did come out last week with an amended decision in the Grant's past case they denied on summary view. But the judges in issuing that sort of revisited certain bits of provisions in it. I didn't think that it really added much to our discussion that I hadn't already talked about, but you might see something in media discussing about the Ninth Circuit's decision. It's the same one they made in September. It didn't substitute this change. I suspect it is likely going to be heard by our Supreme Court. Okay, and I'm going to get my yellow.
All right, thank you, Attorney Finnell. Bring us back up to speed. So. Yeah, we have some difficult decisions to make. I figured if it sounds good to council, what we can do is just to round Robin to see where folks are at this issue. I think we have gotten. You know, we purposely went to public comment the other week to get as much public comment as possible, and I think we got a lot. We've got a lot by email as well. So I thank you upfront to everybody who's spoken up, and I'm glad this council took took extra time to take a lot of public comment on this issue. So we kind of know, I think we're all on the same page on what the possible options before us are. So I'm wondering if we just want to go around and state our thoughts on where everybody thinks we should go and see if we have a consensus or at least a majority aboard ahead with this. So I'll see if anybody wants to. Go first. Sure, Councilmember Frye, appreciate it.
Well, you won't be surprised. I. I was really impacted by the public testimony in a lot of different ways. And I'm a grandmother of small children, and so my heart, of course, was touched probably the most by the the parents. You know, the young family that's trying to raise their children across from MLK or on MLK. And so, you know, I I I know we have to do something and I know what our options are, and I guess I kind of lean for towards the. Our restriction and I know that many people who are without houses. Because of security and their fear, don't feel comfortable, you know. Sleeping during the during the night, and so they sleep during the day, but I, you know, I I. Balancing the rights of of people here, I've got it when that young man told me that his daughter had been sexually propositioned in her front yard, you know, that's not something. That a kid forgets and behavior, we need to focus on the behavior. So, you know. And then there's the whole shelter and and, you know, facility situation and. I was very appreciative of Robin O'Grady being on the call last week, I think it was, and she. You know, said, wait a minute, we're still here in Bremerton, you know, at the, what is it, the Quality Inn? And even though they're going to be moving to Port Orchard, all of this, it's like with this last thing, you know, I I know this is on our our agenda for this year. I know we need to do something about it, but when we're facing shelter shortage with a shelter moving out of Bremerton. I I'm just, boy, that it's just bad timing. As we try to figure this out, and so I'm going to sit back and I'm going to listen. And hope that I get more clarity with other council members and and with our city attorney.
Anyone else? I'm happy to jump out of my own box. No one else wants to go next?
Okay, um, so much of the same. I feel like we have to, we have to create some balance, right, for everybody and. I, you know, one thought that popped into my head was like, we make it a restriction like we do for like a liquor license or cannabis. Like a certain distance from schools and things like that, you know, the time thing, it makes a lot of sense until you really hear what that means. I went, I went down to MLK to kind of take it, take it all in and, you know, yeah, there's, that's their lives right there and. So I don't necessarily have a preferred solution. I mean, I guess my preferred one solution is. Just abolish it, abolish the camping ordinance and maybe continue to get input and then maybe craft something. But there's also something you can be said for. While it's still on the books, you know, just retooling it. So, but I don't, I don't necessarily have. You know, I it's. Sort of the language of like the. You know. We're often hearing the language of most vulnerable folks, but then we've got children and to be children. And they should be able to play. And then. I have one other point. Um, you know, there's, there's. There. All we, what we do is we legislate, right? We create laws, we create a framework for the citizens of Bremerton to operate within. And so we've got this large population that can operate within that. Now we've got a, you know, a population with significant challenges. It doesn't mean they don't have, they don't have no framework. We have to find a framework that hopefully will allow them, you know, to be able to live and find. Facilities and.
Yeah, I'm I'm in somewhat agreement with. My fellow counselors who just spoke, I. I know that the Ninth Circuit is the most liberal circuit in the country. And if they are coming down with a. Suggested framework of, you know what, these people are neighbors, are fellow citizens, are fellow humans. Due to a lot of circumstances outside of their control, mainly, you know, the economic. Framework of this country, in my opinion, are unable to house themselves. It is cruel and an unusual punishment to criminalize that. I think the framework that the court has handed down is a suggestion to cities recognizing the balance the counselor Goodnow is talking about. Between a very serious issue where. You know, funding might not be. Available for us to to make sure everybody has a home, has a municipality, right? Maybe as a country, as a state, we might have that funding. But we're trying to balance these interests of an unhoused vulnerable population with a population that. You know, does have private property rights, does have a community that has been. Really fighting at least for the last six and a half years that I've lived here to to kind of regrow as a downtown corridor. The testimony of. Some of the behaviors that people are experiencing, I'm trying to put myself in people's shoes, both. Who are unhoused and those who live in the community where this encampment has has naturally sprung up. So my position is kind of taking a guide from the Ninth Circuit, trying to balance these two interests, recognizing that criminalizing. Just being poor in this country is cruel and unusual punishment. However, we still have societal norms and issues that accompany encampments that that brought. Get brought up that really probably aren't great for the neighborhood or those folks that are that are unhoused. So I'm in favor of time, manner and place restrictions, but I think that this is something that really needs a lot of public input. It needs a lot of stakeholder input. I I find the Lakewood ordinance to be the most compelling because it doesn't just set time, manner and. Place restrictions, it backs it up with a commitment of funding from the municipality. It backs it up with codifying. We are going to be working with these nonprofits to ensure that affordable housing is available. They dedicated 1% of their city budget. To that, so whatever we do, if we do decide to. Make any sort of restrictions on camping. We have to, I think, as a council, back that up with actual funding that is going to impact these populations rather than just saying, we don't want to see you. That's very, very important to me. I think it's important to the majority of us, and I think the Lakewood ordinance is our best example. But I want continued conversation with the community, with unhoused individuals, with folks in the neighborhood, with nonprofits. To where we can really craft the best. The best ordinance that we can around this.
Yes, Kinder. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't quite, you called my name, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
Okay, so as I had mentioned last. Study session, I like the Lakewood ordinance overall of the three that were presented to us. And before I get into. The framework that I'm thinking of after hearing all the input, I have a question. Kylie, the Lakewood ordinance talked about. The ordinance can't be enforced if there is no. Shelters within a fifteen mile area of the city or where the. Houseless person is is located in Lakewood, something to that effect. In other words, it doesn't have to be contained within Lakewood City's borders. If a shelter is not available, then the law cannot be enforced. Do we have that situation now? I know there's a shelter being built in Port Orchard, but if we passed an ordinance that. Prohibited camping, if there was a shelter within fifteen miles of the city limits, is there such a place? Do we have the capacity now?
So just to clarify, so Lakewood's ordinance has a couple of features. One is that the wetland or protected waters area. And I'm sorry, I, you have a heart trouble. Can you hear me? I can speak up. The protected waters area is. Not contingent on shelter space availability. That's where Lakewood goes with that. Camping isn't allowed in those areas regardless of shelter space availability. With regard to. What, you know, then they have another portion of the code that is similar to what we have now, right? That just says you can't camp in Lakewood at all, but this portion is only. Enforceable if there is shelter space available. And so that portion of their code. Obviously, they, they, if you look in here, the their partnership is with the city of Tacoma, and so they don't have that shelter in their city. They partnered with Tacoma and sent money and financially support that shelter that's outside of the city limit. There is some. I want to say risk, there's, there's language in the one of the Ninth Circuit cases that that make it sound like it needs to be within your actual jurisdictional boundaries, and that took a lot of heat. I don't think many people are following that verbatim. As long as it's reasonable for someone to be able to get to the shelter or perhaps if the city is providing transportation to the shelter. So as to your question about what we have right now, I mean, we have, you know, Pendleton Place is a low, low barrier, housing first model and the quality, that's within the city limits and then as well as the quality is within the city limits. It's my understanding that those are both at capacity right now, and so if we had a similar ordinance as Lakewood, like let's just say we had that on our books. We would have the ability to enforce in areas where there are protected waters, but we would not have ability to enforce in other areas.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And so the question is like, would the Port Orchard. Shelter count, I guess, toward our counts? And I've even, we've even considered whether even, you know, there's free ferry service between here and Seattle, does that count? There is, this is a gray area and there's not a, there's not a black and white law letter answer that I can give you, except I can say that. You just know what these are looking at, like what they feel is reasonable for a person in that situation to access, and so. We've been looking, you know, at when Salvation Army was open, like that that's reasonable quality in Pendleton Place and like its first availability in in those areas. We haven't been looking across the water. And we. I think the Port Orchard one, it would probably certainly be a stretch, so I don't think that that particular location would be one that we'd consider as a part of our shelter availability. But that's going to be something that's developing as these cases, you know, move through the course.
Okay, so to start off, I like the Lakewood prohibition. It's just like our Shoreline Management Act, right? Within two hundred feet development has to be protected, basically, and so I do like that as far as, you know. The unintended consequences of camping with no. Sanitary facilities, we want to protect our watershed, so hopefully everybody's in agreement with that. The. I wanted, listening to the testimony last week, I want to take into the concerns like other council members mentioned. About the people on MLK. Way, the residents and how they're affected, and it's particularly around their street, but as we know, it could be on anyone's street. And so the approach that. I'm thinking about, I'm thinking out loud and all people that aren't listening start attacking me or whatever, hey, we got to come up with some solutions, so I'm just going to throw it out there. I could be wrong, but. You got to try. So I want a balanced approach, I think similar to what my previous council members had just spoken about. And the way I would approach it is if. There is no shelters available. Then you can camp in the city of Bremerton. But you can't camp in all public spaces. I want to avoid the camping on the sidewalks across from somebody's house or in front of somebody's house. I would designate public spaces that are in the city of Bremerton that have the least amount of impact on its residents. Doesn't necessarily have to be a park, but it could be a park. It could be a city space that is not being developed whatsoever, and we put up our. Adequate facilities like a porta potty or whatever to give these people some. Some sanitary services which are better than what they have now. And. That would be provided if there is no shelter space and we can work out the mechanics of that definition, whether it has to be within the city or not. And we would have an incentive then as a city to provide shelter space because we're going to get complaints wherever these areas are as well. But I think that approach would be preferred to what we have now.
Muckler. Thanks. Okay, so we have an unconstitutional ordinance. That's a big deal. The hearing last week. Was a really tough meeting, and it appears to me that what we have is two populations, the houseless and the houseless who like to prey on the houseless and the housed. So two separate kind of problems. Look, I I too like the Lakewood ordinance very much. It's specific and it makes sense. I mean, people can understand I can't. Camp next to this river, for example. The audit committee has been looking at parcels of surplus city owned property. And for example, this would be a temporary fix, but the area to the north of the Public Works Building on Oyster Bay. Between the Chevron and Public Works is land that we own. And I would imagine that, you know, am I a lawyer? No, but I would imagine that we could open that for camping and provide a portisian. But you still have to have somebody there, and that's the part that we don't have yet. So I don't know how severe the penalties are for having an unconstitutional ordinance, but I would imagine they're not good. So I would suggest that we repeal this next week and then start coming up with a better one immediately thereafter.
Good to go unless you want.
I'd love to hear your thoughts before I go.
Sure, absolutely, yeah. So, yeah, I. Again, appreciate all the public comment we got. Now, we really took extra time to to make sure we got that. And I'll say aloud that no matter what we do, no matter what option we take going forward, we're making sure that folks experiencing homelessness either have shelter space or a public place to be. No matter what we do, that's, that's what's going to happen, and so we just have options going forward on how to, how to ensure that. I think it's an excellent point. We need to think citywide. We obviously heard the most about the MLK area because that's certainly. The largest encampment at the moment. It's, it's in my district, as I say, I've walked by every day for about, you know, ten years down there. And I don't think we could ignore that, that that area has been growing substantially and the impacts it has had on the neighborhood and the people around it. I personally can't support a full repeal. To me, that is, it's too extreme. I think we need to find a middle ground. That, again, we're going to make sure that folks experiencing homelessness have shelter or public space. But I do think we have to take into account the needs of everybody in the city, the impacts on environment, ADA access and the entire population. One thing that really helped me was. We were all provided this book entitled The Book on Ending Homelessness, and it was provided to us by somebody who does a lot of, a lot of work and advocacy for folks experiencing homelessness. And it's actually a really, really good read, and there's one section here I kind of wanted to point out, and so the author is, you know, basically an expert on the steps that jurisdictions and, you know, what really need the whole country to take on this. But what really won me over is he has a section here about, you know, what we call public camping in encampments. And his recommendation actually says, do not legalize them or make them a possible solution, regardless of what you may think about your local lack of affordable housing or current capacity of shelters. Tent cities that get more and larger tent cities as soon as you start down this road and resolving it longer and more difficult. Before you know it, you're spending oodles of resources on really expensive bandages. Meanwhile, the problem will just grow. Another passage says, do not give anyone living there the impression that claiming public space is one's own is allowed or even legal. This makes bringing it to a close more difficult and more likely to be tangled in various legal issues. Everyone has access to public space. If the tent city is on private property, this must be resolved through the will of the private property owner. There's other good things of what to do, which it does say, you know, provide some basic resources, including access to clean water and public restroom facilities, but. It basically recommends not, not to go beyond that. So I. I think the Lakewood ordinance is a, is a good move as well. I think we should, you know, tweak it to address the needs of Bremerton and our specific locations, but. Following this book, hearing the impacts from the neighborhood, I think. The goal should be twofold, as we continue and as we have done, provide resources for folks experiencing homelessness, keep working with our county and state partners, because that's really where this needs to come from. On universal services and resources and not expect the poorest per capita city and the county to. To provide all its resources, but in the meantime, I also think that is important, following this book's guidance to prevent large encampments from forming. We will make sure folks have public places or shelter, but I think large encampments are not, not the answer. I don't think it's. I don't think it's a fair solution of folks experiencing homelessness. I don't think it's a fair solution for the neighborhoods. So I would like to see us not repeal an ordinance, but start working on an update to the existing one on the public Lakewood model that strikes that middle ground. So that's where I'm at the moment.
Okay, I was, and I appreciate listening once. I was just, here's what I've been thinking about is, I remember one time when I was in, I was losing, I, I've been kicked out of so many places. In this county and moved so many times. I've lived in halfway house. I mean, I said this before, I used to live in Oxford House, got kicked out of there too. But, but that was because it's hard to get along with other girls. What can I say? And, you know, I wasn't emotionally mature. I hadn't been able to like take advantage of like therapy and like recovery and like all these things that I have the privilege of now. But there was one time, I remember I just had to leave this housing situation that I was in, and so I went and took my tent down to Illahi and I put it up. And then I left Illahi to go try to get the fifteen bucks from someone to go stay there. And it, and, and it was, and by the time I found fifteen bucks, I'd also found another couch to sleep on. It was late. It was like nine o'clock. I couldn't get back into Illahi anyway, so I had to go back the next day with the fifteen bucks this person gave me, whose couch I slept on, to go get my tent back and. Just knowing the time that all this took place. Was nighttime and. Just thinking about situations like that, like with time restrictions and and knowing. just thinking about situations like that, like with time restrictions and, and knowing that we don't have, even if salvation army. And I'm damn pissed that we have made these people reliant on this church for services when we have so many other resources available. And I'm sorry for getting angry about that, but we have so many other resources in our community. But they are reliant and centralized on this place right here, and we should be providing more services and making it easier for folks to get those services. But um, a time restriction has problems too. Um. I would be in favor of making a motion to repeal it at the next meeting and seeing where the vote lies and seeing where the majority vote goes. Or we can reach a consensus today on that because it's an illegal ordinance. We have an illegal ordinance on our books. Why not just repeal it while we continue to work on proper wording? Because that continuation is going to happen. We're not gonna have an ordinance next week. Pendleton Place is not a shelter, right? Because you gotta apply to get into there. And there's a long process. And even just trying to help some folks learn the process, it's not an adequate shelter. You can't go in there. You can't, like in an emergency, you can't show up at it. I mean, it is like a shelter, but it doesn't count. Um, I don't know, we don't know one hundred percent if the people who are acting foolish and dangerous and harmful on the neighbors over here are unhoused. We don't have any proof of that. And I'm super frustrated by folks whose property rights are not being protected. You know, like there's like, if somebody, if there's proof that people have crap and weapons and all these things happening on somebody's private property, why is that not being enforced? I don't think there's any laws in the state of Washington that prevent law enforcement from investigating those things. And they know these people. They know, they recognize the repeat customers. So we have a vulnerable group of people on a whole lot of levels, like unhoused folks, children. MLK, they deserve, but I mean, like the Marvin Williams Building deserves better. Martin Luther King, like a street named after Martin Luther King deserves better than the treatment that it's being given. Um, and so I, I mean, I, I cannot like in good conscience, like vote for any specific ordinance at this point in time, but I will absolutely vote to repeal the one we have. So, um, thank you. That's it.
Let me ask Attorney Finnell, are there, um, any penalties the city faces for keeping it on its books if it's not enforced? I mean, in, in the next day, month or two?
Um. That's a difficult question to answer. Um, and so the, I mean, obviously, anytime that there's a, a ruling that comes out, people have to take action. And, and there's, there's time allotted for that. Um, it's not being enforced right now, but there's some language in the Grant's past case about it being in the books and people, um. Uh, and, and basically, and that, that being problematic. And, and so, um, I would say it's certainly, you know, not something that we would want to drag our feet on for a long time in addressing it, but, um. Yeah, I mean, and, and I, I guess just to offer some of, of, of middle ground here, and this is if it's a, a stopgap between like maybe wanting to take more time, but also wanting to take some action now. Um, our neighbors, uh, Port Orchard and also amended their code to simply add in a phrase, um, that there can, no camping prohibition is, will not be enforced if there's no shelter space available. And so it, um, squares up with what's the practice. Um, and, um, would satisfy, you know, but it is, um, like I said, if we're like, how I answered Eric's question earlier. Um, in a situation where we don't have shelter space available, you effectively don't have anything on the book. So I'm just saying somewhere between a complete repeal and somewhere between even what we have on the books until we get it figured out is maybe, um, an option. And it's, it, it would really, it, it would really, like I said, advantage ours.
I think I'm hearing at least a large majority, um, that are not in favor of a repeal with then no further action. Seeing a possible suggestion to repeal and keep figuring it out. I'm hearing we have a quick fix to prevent illegal liability at the moment. My proposal to council, and then we can do another round and get thoughts, is, um, it sounds like there's a majority in favor of a liquid-like ordinance. So.
I didn't hear a majority.
I heard, uh, give me a thumbs up if you're in favor of a liquid-like ordinance. I thought I heard it from Younger, Mochler, I, 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 six or seven. Um, you know, what details can be worked out? Um, but maybe coming back next study session with that, uh, liquid-like ordinance adapted to Bremerton. And we could make tweaks. Um, we could kind of go around staring at it and start talking possible, um, place, time modifications to it.
Okay.
Um, I'll throw that out to council as something we could do next study session, um, and work on that. And then based on your advice and what you think the legal rest of the city is, that we have to at least have that clause next week.
Yeah, and that's part of, the fact clause is part of the Lakewood ordinance. It's also, it would just basically be like saying that you want to do um, one amendment now and continue working on it. Which is, I mean, that's completely, there's, there's, there's no limit on the number of times you can amend or change anything here or anything like that. And so.
Or we, or we, uh, if you don't think it's a significant risk of having a couple of weeks, we just tackle next study session on what a replacement ordinance would be. Um, and then pass it, but.
May I make one more?
Yeah, let's do, let's do a round of comments on that suggestion.
It's not gonna be a whole long rant. I'm off my soapbox now. Um, but, I mean, not really, like I'll always be on it. But for now, just, just so y'all know, there are, I mean, there are other laws that can be enforced. And they still can be like discriminating against houseless people, you know, unhoused people. But for your comfort, the two that, and I mentioned it before, the two that I've learned that are used in camping situations, which are trespass and disorderly conduct. And so if they're on property, then they get a trespass. So even if we repeal, amend, whatever, um, that doesn't change. That's an overarching law that the police are using now to cite houseless people. Okay, that's property rights right there. That should be something that's enforced. Um, the other one is disorderly conduct. So, um, if they are on a right of way, um, blocking a sidewalk, um, and they don't move when asked to, that's disorderly conduct. So that's another way that this is, can be regulated. That is a tool that may or may not be being used like it should be right now. Um, and I'm just also just, like, I know the chief's opinions about compassion and, and so on. But I really would love for him to be part of this discussion. Because although sometimes he and I like, may not see eye to eye from a value point of view on this issue, he does have good perspective and data that needs to inform us on, um, how these things are being, how these tools are being utilized and where he feels like he can't utilize them and why not? You know what I mean? I mean, I'm willing, like, I were you saying you changed your opinion about something recently? And I've changed my opinion about listening to police. So we're not doing Robert's World Order, are we?
Hmm.
In a study session?
Hmm.
I reject that. So.